I'd like to call this meeting to order. Michelle, would you please roll call?
Evan.
Here.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Yeah.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Here.
Here.
Ian, if you would please introduce the introduction for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Today's veteran is Douglas Amray. He was born in Buffalo, New York, at the best hospital to be born at in western New York, Mercy Hospital, and graduated from East Seneca High School. Doug enlisted in the United States Army in January 1972, serving 22 years, and retiring with an honorable discharge in January 1994, earning the rank of First Sergeant. His military occupational specialty was 63 Zulu Mechanical Maintenance Supervisor. His tours include serving in Korea at Camp Humphreys, Camp Stanley, and Camp Hovey, Tunisia, North Africa, 54th ASG Rhineburg, Germany, Fort Carson, Colorado, Fort Stewart, Georgia, Aberdeen Proving Ground, Maryland, Fort Greeley, Alaska, Fort Polk, Louisiana, beginning and ending his military career at Fort Hood, Texas. First Sergeant Amray's military decorations include Meritoria Service Medal with one oak leaf cluster, Army Commendation Medal with four oak leaf clusters, Army Achievement Medal with two oak leaf clusters, Good Conduct Medal, Seventh Award, Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, Non-Commissioned Officers Professional Development Ribbon with numeral three, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon with numeral five, Driver and Mechanic Badge, Sharpshooter Badge for Rifle, Marksmen Badge for Pistol, and National Defense Service Medal with one service star. Upon retiring from the Army, Doug was employed for 17 years by Metroplex Hospital in Colleen, Texas, as a purchasing agent and warehouse supervisor, in which he retired from in 2012. Doug and his wife Karen moved to Livingston County from Colleen, as they have family in Nunde, in the surrounding area, and currently reside in Nunde with their beloved dog, Sam. Doug enjoys spending time hunting, fishing, and woodworking. He continues to serve his community on the Hunt Cemetery Committee and as an active member of the Dalton American Legion, Ireland Kelly Post 1569. Doug, would you please lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice to all.
Doug, for your service in the United States Army, the Board of Supervisors please present you with a certificate of appreciation. Thank you, Doug.
We do have the last set of meeting minutes from June 23rd for your consideration. I'll ask if there's any one wishing to make any corrections to those draft minutes that you've received. Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second, please.
Schuster.
Ball.
Do we have any motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Communications, please, Michelle.
Please notify me if you plan to attend the annual legislator night on Wednesday, August 25th, and also notify me if you plan to attend the ISAC Fall Conference, September 12th through 15th.
Thank you. We do have an abstract of claims.
Mr. Wadsworth, approving abstract of claims 7A, July 14th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. I'll ask at this time if anybody has any questions or discussion on the abstract of claims. Hearing none of the roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted.
We do have privileges of the four this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a privilege of the floor for Economic Developer Bill Bacon and Deputy Developer Maureen Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Chairman. Many small business owners struggle through the first few years of operation with overhead expenses, marketing costs, and the day-to-day details of managing a new or expanding business. Dream of Eight Business Competition is a game changer. Originally developed by the Livingston County Economic Development Office, the competition provides winners with the essential resources and tools needed to successfully open or expand a business by including matching grant funding and technical assistance for the owners. Using a $300,000 award of CDBG funds issued through the New York State Office of Community Renewal, we are excited to announce and introduce you to the second round of Dream of Eight awardees and some of Livingston County's newest businesses. When we call your name and acknowledge your business, please come to the front and be recognized. Representing owner Jessica Van Zee, Angie's Ice Cream in Dansville. This past spring, owner Jessica Van Zee opened Angie's Ice Cream in downtown Dansville as a vintage-themed ice cream parlor, serving up homemade custard ice cream and more. With the help of Dream of Eight, Angie's Ice Cream will create a new offering for residents to enjoy and enhance the existing business community in Dansville. Owner Andrew and Sarah Dorflinger. A N Wine and Liquor House, Geneseo. A N Wine and Liquor House is a retail wine and liquor store in Geneseo that offers a large selection of products at competitive prices. Owner Andrew Dorflinger is creating a destination location for consumers with services such as online ordering, delivery, curbside pickup, competitive pricing, and excellent customer service. Ann Younger, owner of the Avon Park Theater. The Avon Park Theater is a unique regional destination for classic and independent movies, live entertainment, parties, and corporate events in Livingston County. Owned by Ann Younger, the Avon Park Theater will host classes for a variety of creative interests, as well as a summer video production camp for teens. Pam King, owner of Easton's Food and Drink in Lima. Newly opened, Easton's Food and Drink is a restaurant and bar in Lima, offering great food, superb cocktails, and entertainment. Owned by Pamela King, Easton's is open daily with extended hours on weekends and holidays, and will expand space outdoors with a large tent, tables for outdoor dining, Adirondack chairs, games, and igloos for winter dining. Unable to be with us today is owner Julie Myers of Florence's Perpetual Estate Sale in Geneseo. Florence's Perpetual Estate Sales is an existing business located in Geneseo and owned by Julie. Florence's offers estate sale services and retail goods, including antiques, collectibles, furniture, jewelry, and home decor. Dream of Eight funding Florence's will expand to become a destination for visitors, treasure hunters, and local shoppers. Owner Don and Robin Carl of Little Lake Brewing in Lakeville, New York. Little Lake Brewing in Lakeville is a micro beverage center with small batch artisan beverages, complemented by a morning menu and seasonal evening menu. Dream of Eight funding will help add an outdoor kitchen and bar space, as well as the installation of equipment for live music, speaker engagements, and old movies. Kristi Harrington, owner of Milk and Honey in Lima. Milk and Honey Cafe will serve the best cup of coffee in Livingston County by partnering with the award-winning Copper Horse Coffee from Ithaca, New York. Owner Kristi Harrington is helping to revitalize Lima and bring local artists into her shop. This contemporary coffee shop will offer decadent beverages and food to attract a diverse group of people. Also unable to be here today, owner Dan O'Brien of the Seasonal Pantry here in Geneseo. Hailing from Washington, DC, Seasonal Pantry owner Dan O'Brien will be launching his business at Ballbrook Farms in Geneseo. Seasonal Pantry Supper Club will offer a unique dining opportunity three nights a week, focusing on turning products into memorable food, servicing tourists and locals, and concentrating on a small number of guests each night. Elizabeth George and Jordan Guadalupe, Six Sprouts Farm Market in Avon, New York. Owned by business partners Elizabeth and Jordan, Six Sprouts Farm will offer local goods, including meats, dairy products, produce, plants, and seasonal items sourced from local Livingston County farms. With the help of Dream of Eight, they will expand by adding greenhouses and a beer garden area for people to gather. Kylie and Jake Stevens, owner of The Barn at Fire Creek Farms in Livonia. Owners Kylie and Jake are expanding Fire Creek Farms with the unveiling of The Barn, a place where visitors can have an experience on the farm, learning about how products are grown, and experiencing products from bakeries, breweries, all paired with local food. Farmers and home bakers can rent the commercial kitchen to create their own products. The Dansville Granola Company in Dansville, New York, owned by Mary Alioto Donahue. Since moving from Maine, owner Mary Alioto Donahue launched The Dansville Granola Company, a granola business in the place where granola was invented. The Dansville Granola Company will be a retail store in downtown Dansville, selling homemade granola, as well as mail order and wholesale. Business will focus on freshness, health, and taste. Kaylee Sternick, from the Local Roost in Avon. In Avon, Kaylee will be opening The Local Roost, a cafe and local fare destination serving wholesome, convenient food and beverage options, with a well-rounded mix of familiar nostalgic choices, eclectic selections, and health-conscious options for the individuals seeking a nutrient-dense whole-food diet. Nicole Alioto, owner of The Vault, standing for Village and Upcycle Lasting Treasures in Dansville. With the help of Dream of Eight, the owner of The Vault, Nicole Alioto, will expand the retail space and create an immersive shopping experience that changes throughout the year. Creating a destination will spark economic development in downtown Dansville, and as the business grows, additional employment opportunities will be made available. Matthew and Jaclyn Morgan, from Lynwood, New York, opening Woodlawn Distillery. Woodlawn Distilling will be the first distillery in Livingston County and the surrounding areas, providing craft liquor to locals and visitors. This farm-based, family-run distillery owned by Matthew and Jaclyn offers high-quality, local-sourced liquor that is made with the ingredients used from the family farm. Melissa Keane, owner of Zeppo's Creekside Creamery in Mount Morris. Zeppo's Creekside Creamery is an ice cream shop located in the village of Mount Morris that offers premium homemade ice cream, milkshakes, floats, and more. Previously known as Zeppo's Ice Cream Parlor, Zeppo's Creekside Creamery has reopened under new ownership of Melissa Keane. With that, I would present to you our second round of Dream of Eight awardees.
Congratulations on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Work that you're doing. Good luck with your presentation.
Hopefully, we've all made you hungry and thirsty. Please keep an eye on these folks. Their businesses will be up and running, and we'll be working with them throughout the year. So, thank you very much for the time today, Chairman, and thank you all Board of Supervisors.
We do have one agenda, or one resolution that we prefer to adjourn to say.
Claiming August 1st through the 7th, 2021, as World Breastfeeding Week.
Yes, if there's any discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second. Move this to a hold.
Move, Schuster.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. All the roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted.
Now, we're going to have some resolutions in this way.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation: Favorite Healthcare Staffing, Inc., Language Fundamentals, Inc., and the Nurse Connection Staffing, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, I will proceed, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, Health Research, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, I will proceed, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health: Catholic Family Center, Genoa Telepsychiatry LLC, Novatel LLC, and Warren's Commercial Cleaning, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask to present the discussion on this resolution.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Social Services: Chances and Changes, Inc., Genesee Community College, and Northwoods Consulting Partners, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any discussion on this resolution.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Mr. Knapp, awarding bids for medical supplies used by Livingston County Emergency Medical Services, Boundtree Medical, L.C., and Henry Sheen.
Mr. Chairman, all items under public service today have been signed up on by committee members who are present. Therefore, I'm in this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Awarding bids and authorizing purchase of pretreated and untreated bulk sodium chloride crushed rock salt for the Livingston County Highway Department and Livingston County Agencies: American Rock Salt Co. Company, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Ask if there's any questions or discussion on this solid.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorization to submit a National Telecommunications and Information Administration Broadband Infrastructure Program Grant application for purposes of expanding broadband infrastructure throughout Livingston County.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Adopting Seeker Negative Declaration for 2021 to 2022, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation Snowmobile Trails Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorization to submit a grant application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation for Snowmobile Trails Grant and Aid Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department: Caledonia Trailraisers, CPL, Hill and Valley Riders, and Engineers and Architects and Land Surriers and Landscape Architects, DPC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes, 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing submission of Environmental Protection Fund application for road ditch remediation in the Canisius Lake watershed.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office: New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Yes, at this time, if there's any discussion on this resolution. Here is none, all will proceed to the show.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office: New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Yes, at this time, if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Here is none, all will proceed to the show.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office: School Safety Grant.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Here is none, all will proceed to the show.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County Low Region Solid Waste Management Committee: Genesee and Wyoming Counties.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Here is none, all will proceed to the show.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 1271, absent 738, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Social Services: Chances and Changes, Inc., Genesee Community College, and Northwoods Consulting Partners, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Lozworth. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Here is none, all will proceed to the show.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 1271, absent 738, adopted.
On this next resolution, I'd like to pull it from the agenda to say afternoon, there's a possibility that some information might be forthcoming that's important in our decision. I don't see any real reason of urgency. We're okay, Shannon, if we wait a few weeks and if there's something of significance we need to know as a board, it gives time for that to be determined and then distributed to everyone. So, I guess I'd need a motion in a second to amend the agenda to hold this off for two weeks.
Lozworth. Davis.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here is none, all will proceed to the show.
Mr. Lozworth. Authorizing professional services contract for the Internal Customer Satisfaction Analysis Process Review of Livingston County Departments: Transpro Consulting, LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Lozworth. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Here is none, all will proceed to the show.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia. Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.